Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Teachers Retirement Board meeting. We have already taken attendance in closed session. But Jennifer, would you like to read our statement for us?
I would. Thank you. The CalSTRS board meetings are live web-streamed, video archived, and available to the public on calstrs.com. Individuals who wish to address the board should wait for the 10-minute public comment period at the end of the agenda item the speaker wishes to address. For comments not pertaining to a specific agenda item, there will be an opportunity for additional statements at the end of the open session. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to comment. However, if there is not enough time for each speaker to have three minutes, the timing will be at the discretion of the chair. To protect the privacy of speakers under the age of 18 who wish to address the board, only their first name and affiliated organization may be provided, but other personal identifying information such as their last name, age, or school may not be shared. And since the May meeting, CalSTRS has received three emails from retirees asking for an increase to the current post-retirement earnings limit and two emails from retirees concerning the PBI data security incident. One asked for three years of credit monitoring service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to share with everyone that Mr. Chair is not here because he is ill. He sends his thanks to the staff and the team for all of the work in preparing the agenda and preparing for the meeting. In turn, the board would like to send Mr. Chair our thanks for being considerate and not bringing his germs to share with us. And we wish him a very speedy recovery. He is very much missed. So, thank you very much. Okay, we are actually on agenda item number...
Twelve.
So, this is my... I thought we had a video in the beginning. Did we not have one this time?
I do not have one on my...
All right, that's okay.
On my agenda, so...
Jonathan's nodding, yes.
Oh, we do have one. Okay, well, let's roll.
We don't want to miss it.
Be on Netflix next week.
That's exciting.
My name is Josie Peavy. I teach second grade in the Thomas Unified School District. I started my teaching career in 1995. I taught fifth grade and sixth grade, and then I taught second. In my career, I could say that I am most proud of being able to get 80 first graders to open up a rally-filled game filled with spectators singing the National Anthem. It's really empowering to see students see their growth from the beginning to the end. My approach to teaching students is to getting to know who they are and how they work. I feel that we have to teach students by meeting them where they are. So, I grew up in a family of nine kids. I am the second-to-the-last child, and I had to work really hard to be able to get the things that I needed. I joined the Army Reserves in high school, and I did it because I had the goal of working to pay for my college. And I became a veteran, and with that, it was the best thing ever. On the weekends, when I'm away from work, the things that I love to do is to get out into nature. I like to hike with my husband. He is a very avid fisherman. I'm a fisherman as well. We like to go camping. We have a tent. We try to get to places that are close to the area so we can have more time to be able to do all those things. I took a class with my husband, and we decided that we would try wine-making and realized it was very hard work. So, we take the wine. It goes into this machine, and we take all of the bottles, and they get filled. We have to make sure that we do all the chemicals right, that we have all the conditions correctly. We do this because it's part of our... It's our creative process. These are some of the wines that we created. This right here is our Pinot Noir. This is our Co-op. These are our friends that help us. I'm right there next to my husband, and that's our bottler. We were ready to bottle our wine that day. When I retire, the first thing I plan to do is travel. It's something that I've wanted to do but haven't really had a lot of opportunity. Additionally, I'd like to make sure that I keep up with my health and my physical body in order to stay strong so I can really enjoy my retirement. Having the CalSTRS benefit means relying on a steady stream of income. It is my security blanket so I know that every month that I would be able to continue to live comfortably and also have some fun. The retirement planning that I've done through CalSTRS has been going onto the website and looking at the webinars in order to get some more information about planning. I am very grateful for having the STIRS benefit. Teaching has been my life, but knowing that I have this lifetime benefit has really kept me going. If I could do this all over again, I would tell my younger self to start investing now, even if it's a little. Invest just a little what you can because it gives you the option to retire in a way that you can do so much more.
That was awesome. That's really nice. Okay, number 12.
Well, that's... I'm so glad that we didn't miss that because that really sets the tone for the meeting and kicks us off on the right foot and shows exactly why we're here every time we meet. So, this is my favorite time of year, which is virtuoso season, and I'm proud to introduce our virtuosos here today. I'm going to let you know who was the selected individuals. I would say it's a competition, and they won, but they were nominated and achieved a very high award. Our virtuosity at CalSTRS is a recognition program that provides our employees the ability to recognize each other through seven different reward levels, and the awards acknowledge individuals and groups focused on daily tasks, consistent behaviors, and accomplishments. And in addition to our day-to-day award-winning recognition program, the Virtuoso Award is the highest honor a CalSTRS employee can receive. The Virtuoso Award is reserved for those individuals who deliver superior sustained performance with a demonstrated impact on the organization. And so, I'm going to be announcing those individuals. They already know they won. They're here, and they're going to stand up as I announce them. So, the first one, let me see. We have the beautiful pictures. We have Janine Thomas. Janine started in 2022 as an analyst on the classification and compensation team within human resources, and she was responsible for independently consulting with leadership on all of the facets of personnel management. Our next award recipient is Janine Davenport. Oh, I'm sorry. Jasmine. I can't read. Thank you. Jasmine is a specialist in the Systems, Solution, and Strategic Development Unit within the Retirement Readiness Division, where she is responsible for the planning, development, and implementation of change management activities. Our next individual is Kelly Towsey. Kelly has served since 2022 in the role of CalSTRS Onboarding Coordinator since... until 2022, where she was responsible for all activities associated with new employee onboarding, and she has promoted into a leadership role since then. A well-deserved promotion for Kelly. And the next person is Laura McCarthy. Laura is a financial accountant III and serves as a technical and functional expert responsible for supervising staff in the Business Direct System Support Unit and Financial Services. Then we have Linda Tran. Linda serves as the Senior Trainer responsible for delivering training in a classroom setting to all new customer service employees. She was responsible for all phases of the instructional design process, including needs analysis, course design, and development facilitation and training and mentorship. So, congratulations, Linda. And then we have Lisa Williams. Lisa works in the Enterprise Strategy Management Division as a Manager Specialist, providing communication, consultation, editing, writing, and publication design for our strategic planning, research reporting, sustainability, and enterprise performance management. She's the one who does all of the design for all of these publications associated with our strategic plan, accomplishments report, and does a beautiful, outstanding job. And then we have our very own Ombuds, Mark Jenny. Mark is CalSTRS Ombuds, where he acts as an advocate for members of the CalSTRS Define Benefit Program and participants of the CalSTRS Cash Balance Program. He makes recommendations regarding issues raised by school employees, members, employer organizations, the legislature, and any others that have an interest in the work that we do here at CalSTRS. So, thank you, Mark. And then we have Natalie Pauskafoya. Natalie works as an Information Technology Supervisor II on the Technology Services Contract Vendor and Asset Management Team. Her role is to work independently to perform technology services, solicitation, and contract purchasing activities. So, thank you, Natalie, and congratulations. And then we have Russell Roach. Russell supports and leads the critical functions and teams on the Pension Solution Project and acts as a liaison from businesses to... from business units to all project work streams, interfaces, and subprojects. Russell is the bond between the project team and the business customers, including all CalSTRS functional areas. So, congratulations, Russell. Samantha works as a Legislative Specialist in the Employer Services Division. She has expert knowledge on the pension administration system, employer services, business processes, and CalSTRS policies and procedures. Congratulations, Samantha. And then Tu Tang. Tu works in the Financial Services Division as a Business Direct Technical and Functional Specialist. Tu performs as an expert regarding operational system changes and coordinates upgrades and enhancements on our Business Direct System while ensuring the system remains in compliance with governmental accounting standards, which I'm sure you all appreciate. So, congratulations to all of our virtuosos. So, that's what I wanted to share on my CEO report in a sense of trying to save some time. I'm going to hand it over to Lisa to finalize the presentation.
All right. I'm going to talk about the H...
Yeah.
Don't leave. Don't leave. As a point of personal privilege, I just wanted to say to all of the virtu... I mean, we love CalSTRS because of the people and the teachers, obviously. We serve the teachers, but every time I come to a board meeting, I just... I'm so grateful for the people that work here. So, I just want to say thank you for your work. I do want to do a special shout-out. Anyone who has supervisor in their name or senior or specialist, God bless you. I've been a supervisor. That is a challenging job. Managing people is wonderful, and it's also super stressful and hard. So, I just want to say, keep at it. And I do want to do a special shout-out to Mark Jenny and the Ombud's office because I'm having him on speed dial all the time, and I just think giving accurate information to our members, helping our members solve problems, helping our unions and faculty organizations solve really challenging problems, and making sure we have the right information and making sure people like me tell people the right information, more importantly, is such a critical role. And I'm really pleased to see the Ombud's report and just having that lifted up because it's such an important role. And so, thank you for all the important roles, all the virtuosos play, and just want to keep you... encourage you to keep on and keep on doing the good work even when it's challenging. So, thanks.
Thank you all from all of the board.
Okay. Since I'm up, I'm going to talk about the HQE progress. So, there has been great progress within the building since the last time we met in July, and it really is exciting to see it come to fruition. I know a number of the board members were able to tour the building with us yesterday, and I think they enjoyed that. So, from a construction perspective, the childcare ceiling is being closed up, and the millwork installation is nearing completion. In the main lobby, the wood paneling and the ceiling panels have been installed. In the café, the graphic wall covering is going in, and the floor is finished. The meeting rooms in the lobby are being prepped for paint and wood wall install, and that should be completed soon. The public restrooms on the lobby level are also completed. And when you go up the building to the office levels, the graphic wallpaper is being installed. Interior wood door installation is complete up through floor six. Countertop installation at restrooms and breakrooms continues, and the AV equipment installation is in process. So, things are really moving there. Floor three is getting ready to be closed down because it's actually ready for move-in. So, they're doing final punch list on that floor. They're doing touch-up paint, and they're doing some final cleaning and placing some final pieces of furniture there. And then that will start happening all the way up the tower. So, we'll start with three and then move up through four. And our fitness area is complete, too. We're actually using reclaimed wood from an old high school gymnasium as part of a sustainability story in that area, and so that's all been completed as well. Although, there is lots of progress in the building, the schedule does continue to slip. As of today, the substantial completion date is November 9th, which is about two weeks past the date I provided to you in July. DPR continues to attribute the delays to the coordination of the inspection process and the inspection approvals with the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Now, I've been regularly sharing with you that these continued delays are putting stress on the owner's portion of the budget, and at this point, we know that we will not have enough contingency to continue to pay for things like extended insurance, inspection fees, and the temporary power that's required for the building. And just as a reminder, the $318.5 million approved budget that the board approved was based on a completion date of January 31st, 2023. And before the amendment was executed, the schedule had already slipped to the end of March, and that is the substantial completion date on our latest agreed-upon amendment to the contract. We'll know more about actual costs as we get closer to the November meeting, but at this point, we are estimating a shortfall of between $1.4 million and $1.6 million based on the projections through a completion at the end of November. And that's all I have for you today. I think Eric Simpson with DPR is in the audience. If any of the board members have any questions directly for him, he's here to answer those if need be, and I'll turn it over to questions.
I think we have questions for DPR.
Okay. There you are. Thank you.
I don't care. So, I think maybe we've been here before.
Yes, we have.
With a lot of the same questions. So, I have a number of them. Obviously, we've asked for lots of updates from you all that I know you've been getting to the team, but could we just... I think the slipping date, I recall a conversation where it wasn't going to slip again. We obviously just slipped again. So, do we have an actual completion date, and what exactly you're doing to ensure this November 3rd date?
Yeah, I think what we said last time is that the finished date, the last time we came here, was the best based on our forecast at the time and that there was always things that could potentially come up that could jeopardize that date, and a few things have come up along the way. There's been a lot of diligent, hard work with everybody involved in the project to work together to solve issues as they arise. Sometimes, we're not able to mitigate all of the time impacts associated with those. We've mitigated a lot of delays along the way to prevent the date from slipping out even further than it has. So, we have multiple meetings a day with everybody involved as issues come up to do our best to find workarounds and other ways to either minimize the delay or gain time back.
I think it might be helpful to even start getting a list of those difficulties you've overcome, and then if you could maybe let us know some other difficulties that you're going to have to overcome to make sure that this is... November 3rd, I'm hearing, is the actual completion date and what you're doing to address and mitigate further delays.
I'd be happy to provide that.
Great. And could you maybe just let us know now what difficulties you foresee in the next month and a half and what your plan is to mitigate any of those?
I can say in a very general nature because there's many. So, we'd be here a while to go over the remaining activities that we have to accomplish, but we are... Next week, we will achieve final air balance on the mechanical systems, which is a significant milestone. That means we'll be able to start fire alarm testing for the entire building, which, when you start talking about that, that means that you're getting very, very close to finishing the project. The challenge is there's still some fire alarm devices that need to be installed, and we're working on that diligently right now. Without those installed, we can't test the entire system, but there's an effort right now to identify those devices and a way to get them installed as soon as possible. We have a smoke control system in two parts of the building that need to be tested ahead of the final testing of that system or the final inspections. We're going to be doing that on a swing shift, which is the late afternoon, so that it doesn't impact the other trades working during the day. So, working smart swing shift, smart overtime is another way that we always look at on a trade-by-trade basis on how to mitigate delays.
Do you think that if you were to increase manpower even more, you could move that completion date up?
We feel like we have the right amount of manpower for the amount of work that's ahead of us, and so it's a balance of how much work they can get accomplished during the day, how many inspectors are available. But keep in mind, we've been working overtime six days a week for over a year, and so overtime doesn't necessarily mean more than eight hours during a day on Monday through Friday. It could be six days a week, which we've done for over a year. We have to be mindful of our craft out there because construction is very labor-intensive. Many, many studies have been done to show that extended overtime after a period of six or seven weeks, you see a loss of productivity and an increase of safety incidences. So, we are very mindful of protecting our craft in the field as well.
Of course, but it doesn't have to be the same people, right? So, you're talking about the same people working overtime. You could increase literally the workers, and then you would have a whole new set of... So, I don't... The studies are about the same people working overtime. I really do want to make sure we're clear on that. We certainly do not want safety incidents, or God forbid, anyone to be hurt, but what we're saying is bring more people on to avoid that and get to completion faster. Certainly don't want anyone to be hurt.
Yeah. When we can, we do. We absolutely do.
And when can you? You just said, "When we can, we do." When can you?
Well, I'll give you an example. So, we can only get inspections eight hours a day, and so that limits the amount of work that can get done during the day as well. When we do have trades that aren't contingent upon inspection, such as flooring and painting and ceiling tile installation, they do work extra hours. So, there's a lot of different factors that go into that balancing of manpower on site.
Oh, I'll look forward to some of this in writing, and I think, obviously, our next... the next time you're before us, it should be completed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. I think Mr. Prasant has questions.
If you... Did you want to have a question?
Go ahead.
As you know, this is a real disturbing process for us, this board, because we govern and take care of teachers' money, and these delays put in jeopardy... could put in jeopardy teachers' money. And we have a fiduciary duty. I feel like a lion to protect that money. And so, when you go back, please understand that the financial consequences will not be borne by our teachers if I have anything to do with it. And so, please be aware of the fact that this board is pretty much united on that position. So, I just want to impart that to you because we've gotten promises of performance for the last nine months, and I know that there have been some hiccups, but I think we've reached our tolerance level. Just wanted to put it clearly to you, as I like to say, flat, not round. Thank you.
I think that's all the questions. Thank you. Thanks for the...
Thank you.
That's all that we have for the CEO report.
Okay. Thanks. No. Okay. Thank you. Number 13, Pension Solution Project. Were these purposely both before lunch? She asked my questions, so...
Good morning. I'm Andy Lasish-Jean, Chief Technology Officer, Executive over the Pension Solution Project along with Bill. Today, Anthony and Chris will give you the update and progress about the project we met last time. Just to remind you, this is the action item, and we'll be asking for approval for sole source contract for Sagitech. Anthony?
Thanks, Ashish. Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Anthony Sweeney, Pension Solution Project Director. I'm happy to be here to present an update since we first kicked off the next phase of our project. We had a little contest with the project team, and we have officially deemed this next phase of the project Destination Go Live. So, hope you adopt that theme along with us. Yeah, Ashish, exactly. We do have stickers. Today, I'll be providing a project update related to recruitment activities, current project status, and contract updates related to CalPERS support vendors and Sagitech. I'll be showing you a high-level project schedule with key activities and dates, and then a set of metrics I hope clearly display project progress that is easily consumable and transparent. Lastly, I will be asking for your approval of our new contract with Sagitech that will take us to a successful implementation and beyond through maintenance, operations, and So, since we last met, we have filled over 15 positions on our project team, including two senior managers, our technical assistant project director, and our data manager. Most of our current vacancies are in some form of the recruitment stage, and I can't thank our partners and HR enough for understanding the critical needs of the project and going above and beyond. Just to call out a few, Sally, Stacy, Erica, and Janine have just been a great help and crystal for her leadership over the team. One of the positions where we have completed the recruitment and interviews is for our state project manager position that you're all familiar with. We are working through the hiring process for a potential individual and are hoping everything will go smoothly. It has taken several recruitments to identify the right individual for this critical job, and it's led to delays in bringing this resource onboard, but we're excited about the potential of our prospective candidate. Both of our assistant directors on the project are project management certified and are covering the leadership and duties of this office until we have a permanent resource in place. I think this is a good time for me to acknowledge many of our project team senior leaders who are with us in the audience today. They've been working hard on this project for many, many years. They're re-energized and committed to driving us to successful implementation with the new schedule in place. So, I'd like to have them stand and just recognize any of them in the audience today. So, on to our project activities. We were happy to put the interim services period behind us on June 30th and begin the new phase of our project. We had a project kickoff on July 3rd and unveiled the new project schedule to our team with the fall 2025 implementation date. The team is excited to have a new target, and we have been making progress on our first critical test activity. I'll speak more to that and show you that progress in just a minute. I did want to mention that both Ashish and I have been meeting individually with project team members to gauge their engagement, ask about pain points, positive development, and ideas to keep the project moving forward. We both have found this a positive experience and a chance to get to know the team members even better, especially for me being new to the team. In moving the project forward, we have an agreed-to contract with our partner Sagitech to take us through Go Live and beyond. At the end of this agenda item, I will provide those... I will ask for your approval of the contract and provide some of these details at that time. forward to our continued collaboration to be successful. I'd like to ask them to stand so you can see who they are and appreciate their recognition. They're happy to answer tough questions as well. So we are nearly complete with our request for proposal for our implementation support services vendor to assist our CalSTRS team with critical activities. The RFP closed on July 28th, and we received 29 proposals from 11 different vendors during the month of August. We have been conducting vendor interviews this month and are on target to select the preferred vendor in the next couple of weeks. We will have the contracts for your approval at the November 1st board meeting, and the vendors will be able to start shortly after that. As I mentioned, we have our new project schedule that the team is marching to. While the actual project schedule is very detailed with thousands of activities, tasks, and hours loaded into it, I wanted to highlight some of our critical activities and the timelines. I won't speak to everything on this minimized schedule here, but I'll speak specifically to a few of the major critical path activities. Our current critical test activity, system integration test that you see at the very top of the schedule, is scheduled to last 18 months and test over 3,500 scripts in six streams, with each stream having distinct business scenarios that allow us to close out one specific type of functionality and move on to the other. I'd like to note that the scripts in each stream span all of our business areas and don't just focus on easier types of functionality at the beginning of the streams. Just to prove that, from my previous experience, things like community property, financial services, survivor benefits are very complex. We've already passed 100%, 60%, and 70% of respective scripts in those areas in this initial stream. So the importance of SIT is that it prepares our CalSTRS team to take over the application and perform user acceptance testing. UAT, as you can see in the green on this schedule, a couple rows down, lasts nine months. You might notice that three months overlap with system integration testing. This streamed approach that I talked about in SIT allows us to maximize our UAT time by starting with functionality from streams that have already been completed in the earlier stages of SIT. Once we're complete with UAT, you'll see this little squeezed two months that we have planned for a soft launch. This is a period where the system will be ready for implementation, but it allows us to input a subset of real transactions in parallel with the legacy system and flush out any unforeseen issues that may have presented themselves at Go Live but allows us to resolve beforehand. Next, I want to point out training. See a few rows down. Obviously, training our staff is a critical component of any new system. And on the schedule, this is an eight-month timeframe that is positioned to get all users trained, yet not trained too early where they forget what they learned prior to Go Live. Efforts for training are well underway, and materials are already prepared, but will be modified and enhanced as new materials get... And new materials will get created as we get closer and prepare our teams for launch. Lastly, I wanted to point out the big star you'll see. This represents our September/October Go Live date, followed by a year of maintenance and operations. Now I'd like to hit on our set of metrics. This is a set of metrics I want to show you repeatedly and present each time we meet to give you insight into our progress of critical testing phases at hand. The first metric is an 18-month view of our planned system integration test, test cases. You'll see the total of approximately 3,700 scripts we plan to test. That includes both internal and external member self-service functionality. As we get further along the testing, I'll update the actuals in this slide, but since it would look extremely small, I've expanded the next slide to show our progress through the first two months of testing. As of September 1st, you can see that we plan to pass 205 test scripts, and our actual pass rate exceeds that number. I'm sure we'll see more variances above and below the targets as we get further along, but happy to report progress has been going well, even as we managed through some initial growing pains of this effort. Even as of today, I checked, we're over 300 test scripts passed and on target with that 915 target. This next slide shows another key metric we are tracking, which is related to test case defects. We have estimated and resourced according to finding a certain number of defects per test case. While defects in production are not generally a good thing, during the testing phase, they're expected and planned for in order to prepare the system for our end users. While some defects may be minor and not require immediate attention, those that affect the core system functionality are identified as critical or high and must be resolved in order to pass the test case. This slide shows the anticipated number of defects over the 18-month period on the 3,700 test cases. This next slide again enlarges the first three months so we can see the data better. Because we are so early in the test phases, it's much easier to predict the expected volumes, but this will likely have even more variance than the past test cases as time goes on. Regardless, minimizing the yellow line of critical and high defects is what we will be watching here. While these defects are one indicator of what may lead to unpassed test cases, we track a number of other metrics in more detail to give us more insight into what might be at issue, and I would provide that information as needed to explain any variances. This last metric slide is a catch-all of all other activities outside of the current testing phase that has defects needed to be resolved prior to Go Live. The defects from our SIT... The main categories you see here are data conversion, batch, interface, and application. The defects I showed you on the last slide from our SIT phase are a subset of these 365 application defects shown here. The others in that 365 buckets were identified in previous testing phases and are scheduled to be resolved as we go through our six streams of SIT. Data conversion is the other major source of defects, and we will be able to show our trending on those over the coming months. But this has reduced significantly over the last few months as we are tracking progress. These are ongoing activities and will continue through user acceptance testing. So before we get on to the action of the Sagitech contract, I wanted to point out other pension solution contracts that will be before you in consent item... Consent Agenda Item 19D. These are for linear solutions, OPAY technology, and visionary integration professionals. These are individual contracts with companies providing resources to support our CalSTRS team on various project activities. These resources are providing valuable support to our teams in areas such as organizational change and using new technologies to improve our business processes, providing support to our test teams and developing strategy and metrics, and supporting our project management office with project schedule expertise and risk analysis. These contracts were initiated at different times during the project and have varying end dates, as you'll see, as a result. I just wanted to bring them to your attention as they pertain to pension solution but different from our approval for the Sagitech contract. So my final update is on our sole source contract with Sagitech that is before you for a vote. This sole source contract was necessary because Sagitech is uniquely positioned to complete this implementation. Besides Sagitech owning the technology framework that will operate Benefit Connect, they also have developed deep knowledge and expertise on our project goals, as well as CalSTRS technology and functional business environment. We have worked closely with our Sagitech partners, as well as our legal office, over the last several months to develop this contract that aligns us with the common goal of seeing this project through to a successful completion. The contract term dates are August 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2027, and the total contract amount will be $128,312,888.44. This contract not only covers the project to implementation of fall of 2025, but also accounts for 21 months of maintenance and operations and stabilization post-implementation through the end of the 26, 27 fiscal year. This also includes a migration of the solution to a cloud environment, which is an organizational goal. I want to clarify, today's action is just for the approval of the sole source contract with Sagitech and not the overall budget dollars. Once we select our implementation support services vendor, we will have a more complete view of all contract costs through fiscal year 26, 27, and we will be back in November to request approval of the remaining funding and contracts, which also include project costs for CalSTRS staff, all CalSTRS vendor support, and other services needed to support the project, such as hardware and software costs. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Sharon?
Thanks, Anthony, for that report. And that was one of my questions. So today we're approving... You're asking the board to approve the Sagitech contract solely. There are other contracts that you're working through that you'll come back in November to ask for. And then in November, I think what would help me, since we've had some, you know, significant bumps in the road with this project, it would really help me... Because even in considering approving this amount, it kind of feels like it's in the middle of a lot of other dollar signs that we've been navigating throughout this project. So it sounds like you're going to come back and give us more kind of breakdowns of... Because it would be helpful for me to understand, like, where are we at now with this... With having Sagitech onboard, which is great, versus... I guess for me, it's always about like, are we... How much more are we spending than we originally planned and just kind of getting a better handle? And I assume we're deciding this contract today because of the amount, correct? That's why it's coming before us?
It's really about the terms and agreement of how we're operating with Sagitech over these next three years plus, and, you know, all the stipulations and the project schedule. But the budget is a part of it, but that'll be approved in November.
Okay. Because some contracts we approve and other contracts without... So I'm assuming it's because of the amount, right, Brian? Is that right? Okay. I just want to make sure. And I just think I will just confess on reading that, I was like, okay, there's commas and commas and commas. So I'll just, you know, straight up... So it might be helpful, you know, to use the M or something in the future just because it, you know, it's a significant amount of money. Congratulations on... We haven't approved it yet, but that's a significant amount of money. And so just to have it maybe notated in a way where it's just easy to look at that and see... Yeah. So, perfect. Okay. Thank you.
I can make a motion to approve the contract.
I'm just noting your action item. Just noting your action item.
This is an action item.
Right, but for the information... Yeah, information item, sorry. I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the Sagitech budget.
The staff recommendation.
The staff recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Extensions? Okay. Staff recommendation has been approved.
Thank you.
So we're counting on you.
I think I want to shout out one thing. It's the legal team. I think you mentioned Lamont and Jenny. I think in the back, I think you all know Lamont, but Jenny just joined us like just a few months back, and we just put into 911 kind of dialing, kind of. So thank you, thank you, Jenny and Lamont. I think it's really, really, very much appreciated. Thanks.
Okay. Yes. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead, Gal.
Before we move on, I didn't know if Mr.?
Well, yeah.
Chris. How do I pronounce your last name?
Chris Caboti.
Caboti, I'm so sorry. If Mr. Caboti just wants to give, just for the board consultant to let us know, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Good afternoon. Chris Caboti with Guide House and our independent oversight update. Wanted to say that we concur with the status update that Anthony gave and the metrics that he presented showing and displaying where those activities are against plan. And we spent a lot of time with Anthony, his team, Sagitech, developing... As they developed those metrics, and I can say it's a good step toward what we talked about in May, which was showing data versus telling stories and telling perceptions of where things are, right? And I mentioned to the board, I think it's important that, you know, you take a look at those charts and make sure that they make sense to you, because in the future, those are going to be what you're going to see repetitively, as Anthony mentioned, and you'll start to be able to key in on where the questions should be asked. So really, the objective of those is to show you where to ask a question about, it looks like we're starting to diverge, or it really looks like this thing's going to peak based on the plan. So do we... Are we confident that we have the people that we need and the processes in place to meet that peak when the curve starts to change? And if we see a divergence, do we know what actions are going to be taken, what levers are going to be pulled to put us back on track? And so, again, keep that in mind. If you have feedback or thoughts around that, or the usefulness or effectiveness of those charts or the data that's in there, again, that's something the project team and we're happy to take back as well. But overall, we've seen progress made with those metrics. It takes a lot on the backend to get the data accumulated, the calculations agreed to, the different fields that are used, you know, even the definition of how many total defects are there that have to be addressed. It takes a lot of work to come to an agreement around what that is. So we're working through that now. I think there's more project level work that needs to be done around that. You saw executive and board level metrics today. The projects to be managed over project level metrics, again, there's work to do there, and we're going to continue working with the team on those. On the project resourcing side, we've been a dog with a bone on this one, right? The project manager is just something that we've really pushed for for a long time now, and to their credit, CalSTRS has worked hard on this recruitment. It's been open multiple times. They haven't just filled the seat to check the box on a recommendation from us, which, again, to their credit, is something we're happy about, but we've been pushing for it. And so to hear that they're through that process now with how difficult it's been... And this is a tough market to fill that role in, to be honest. So we understand that. It's just something that's critical, and so we're happy to hear that. That may be coming to a close here, so it's good news for us. Another thing I wanted to point out, again, from a vendor management perspective, it's really important, obviously, that Sagitech and CalSTRS collaborate well and work together well on prioritization, scope setting, challenge addressing, all of those things. And we've seen through the ISP and up to now, very positive interactions and collaboration amongst the teams, and we're happy to see that. It's going to become more critical, obviously, as we get through this thing and as more vendors are brought onboard through that procurement that Anthony talked about. I mean, there are a lot of different service areas there and potentially a different vendor for each one, depending on how that shakes out. And so, again, a number of vendors will be added to the environment potentially, maybe not. But how that interaction occurs is going to be important, so we'll be watching that as well. Those are the main areas I wanted to cover today, though, and happy to answer questions as well.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you, Chris, for your truthful write-up. We really appreciate that. Appreciate you calling things out.
And so, again, a number of vendors will be added to the environment, potentially, maybe not. But how that interaction occurs is going to be important, so we'll be watching that as well. Those are the main areas I wanted to cover today, though, and happy to answer questions as well.
I just wanted to say thank you, Chris, for your truthful write-up. We really appreciate that. I appreciate you calling things out, and also to everybody for the data-driven information. It's a lot easier to follow, really, than colors that are a little bit arbitrary. So thank you for that, and hopefully we're off on the right track now and we can get this done. Does anybody else have questions? We're all good? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is an hour good for lunch? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, let's do 12, 12:15. We will adjourn until 12:15, sorry, 1:15, and take up with number 14. Thank you. Welcome back to open session of the Teachers Retirement Board. We are on item, thank you, we are on item 14, Exploring Innovation and Strategy at CalSTRS.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a present update on the assessment that we conducted with our innovation work and Accenture. Am I echoing? Is something happening? Okay. I think there's a presentation. Peta? Hopefully.
No, I'm just saying that they don't have them.
We don't have one? Okay, well, I can't, I can't refer to a timeline, but it's in your packet. We, in the packet, we had a timeline of the progress. Here we go.
There we go.
A timeline of the progress that we've completed over the innovation activities this last couple of months, couple of months. And so with the help of us, with the help of Accenture, working towards some of the goals in our strategic plan under Goal 2, and grow, to grow our resiliency and efficiency in the service of our members. As you can see, we've wrapped up our innovation readiness and maturity assessment, and we're now in the design phase. And I'm going to summarize the assessment findings and share the final guidelines and guiding principles that the board and executive staff have refined in the work that we did at the July offsite. And then we'll look at some of the other activities as we have gone, as we work through this process. During the assessment phase, CalSTRS staff and Accenture, our innovation consultant, conducted three activities. We conducted a culture DNA assessment with 122 select CalSTRS employees and leadership involved in innovation. We held 14 focus groups, meeting with leaders and staff from each branch to gather feedback on innovation at CalSTRS, and participants also completed a benchmarking survey during these sessions. Then in June, executive staff participated in a vision workshop at the Accenture campus. We reviewed the assessment results to better understand CalSTRS' current state of innovation. These insights helped us determine a direction for our innovation efforts as we move forward in this work. We also reached a common understanding of what innovation means at CalSTRS. So here are the key findings from that assessment. Overall, staff have high levels of trust and leadership and strategic alignment with CalSTRS' mission. However, they lack a common understanding of what innovation is at CalSTRS and want more communication and direction from leadership regarding the expectations, which is some of the work that we have assigned for us moving into the future. CalSTRS has a strong foundation of innovation where new ideas are generated and continuous improvement around existing processes is the norm. We are challenged when it comes to prioritization and implementation of ideas. A lot of times, resource challenges and competing ideas and projects impede our ability to do the things that we want to do in a timely manner. Time-intensive, inefficient processes, slow innovation at CalSTRS and limit the bandwidth that staff can invest in being creative and building out ideas. And this impedes the organization's ability to be agile and flexible and work quickly. Culturally, CalSTRS struggles with risk averse mindsets, hierarchy, a lack of velocity and adaptiveness, and constraints around growth and rewards, which impedes innovation. So you can see that we have some work to do internally on moving and advancing and moving past some of the barriers that we've identified during the assessment phase. And based on these results, we identified four recommendations for the design phase to help develop our innovation capabilities. So the recommendations are align the organization around a common understanding of innovation, define the structures and processes to prioritize and implement innovation, streamline processes to improve efficiency, velocity, and bandwidth, and strengthen the culture around innovation. It really needs to be embedded into the DNA of the organization so that we create a safe environment where innovation can thrive. We've already taken action on the recommendation to create a common understanding of innovation. The board and executive staff co-created draft guiding principles at the October offsite in 2022. And then in the visioning workshop, executives discussed how to operationalize the principles and also created the catchphrase "create for tomorrow" to align and motivate CalSTRS around innovation. At the July board offsite, that we just had a couple of months ago, the board and executives, again, worked in a workshop setting, and we participated in activities to further strengthen the guiding principles. Staff refined this work into the final innovation catchphrase and guiding principles that we see today. This provides a clear vision for our activities as we build out our innovation program in the design phase. So in the design phase, we will develop our innovation operating model. We've identified four work streams. We're setting up a working group that will create the innovation playbook, so that will kind of be the measures and rules around how we will operate internally and what we will work on first. The playbook guides the operation of the innovation function at CalSTRS. It identifies the process for launching innovations from proofs of concepts to reality. It also includes an operating model, roles, metrics, technology enablers, and funding along with other components. We are organizing our backlog of ideas and will prioritize one or two low-complexity concepts to test the use of our playbook. We will pilot a behavioral experiment to accelerate innovation behaviors, and we will increase awareness of the program and build excitement around innovation and regular communication to staff. So you can see that this, you know, foundational timeframe that we're in is really where we're going to start implementing some of these testing pilot programs to test out if the framework that we're going to advance is actually something that's going to be manageable and doable for us to accelerate into more complex ideas and institute throughout the organization. But it'll take, it'll take a while. We're really excited about where we're going to go, and as we've committed, we will be bringing back these updates to you as we go along and include you in additional innovation activities at the appropriate time. And that's it. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I don't see any questions, but thank you very much, and we appreciated participating in the activities at the offsite. It was kind of fun. You're welcome. Are there any public comments on item 14? Hearing and seeing then, we will move on to item 15. Ms. Turco, labor market bench, labor market benchmarking study update.
I know. It's hard enough once. Well. Good afternoon, members of the board, Crystal Turco, CalSTRS staff. This is an information item. In alignment with your policy and the CEO delegation, we are initiating a labor benchmark study for positions covered under the board's salary-setting authority. As a refresher, that those positions are the CEO, the chief operating officer, the chief financial officer, all of the investment management classifications, the general counsel, and the system actuary. Excuse me. We will be partnering with McLoggan, who will provide information relative to total compensation, both base salary and incentive, and we are working right now to get that contract finalized. A labor benchmark study was last done in 2021, and we do try to make sure we're conducting the studies every two years. At that time, compensation was set for two new classifications that support the collaborative investment model, the senior investment director and the senior portfolio manager classifications, as well as resulted in salary changes to the classifications of deputy chief investment officer and general counsel. Excuse me, I have a tickle in my throat. Results of the labor benchmark study are going to be presented back to you all in March of 2024, and that concludes my presentation. Do you, do any of you have questions?
I don't see any in the queue, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie is next. Proposed operating budget concepts.
I'm Julie Underwood, the chief financial officer, and I am here today with Prit Paul Baines. She is our assistant director of financial planning and budgetary reporting. And before she gets started, she's going to present the concepts to you today, but I wanted to bring two items to your attention first. The first one is that the state is still projecting lower revenues, and so they have issued a directive to all state agencies to limit their new requests. And so we believe our concepts today are in compliance with that directive. The second thing I wanted to mention is the pension solution budget. Anthony mentioned it during his pension solution update item, that that budget is still under development. So that budget is not presented to you today in the concepts. And because it's not included right now, as it stands, the operating budget looks like it is a decrease as compared to the prior year budget. And so we know when we bring you back the November proposed operating budget for your approval, we include that pension solution budget. It will, it will result in a net increase in our operating budget as compared to the prior year. So I just wanted to point that out to you today. So with that, I will turn it over to Prit Paul.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Good afternoon, members of the board. Prit Paul Baines, serving as the assistant director of the financial planning and budgetary reporting team. Very excited to be presenting the 24, 25 operating budget concepts for your review and input today. And before we get started, I just wanted to take, take a moment to discuss the annual operating budget concept process and that, and what all that entails when we're developing the concepts on an annual basis. And so the process commences more than a year in advance of the adoption of our final budget, and it's really, it's designed to make sure that, you know, our resources are allocated efficiently and that they are in alignment with the organization's broader strategic priorities and state directives, as well as making sure that we're maintaining our core business functions. It is a very collaborative process. We work with all the business areas across the organization. We put a lot of thoughtful consideration into the process. You know, we have to make sure that we've got all the proper justification in place for all the resources that are being requested. The budget concepts are reviewed and approved by our senior leadership team, including our CEO. And on that sentiment, I also wanted to give, extend gratitude to the entire budget team for all their hard work and support this budget cycle. So with that, do we have a? Do not have that. So with that, our fiscal year 24, 25 budget concepts currently include a request for $1.9 million to establish 12 authorized positions dispersed across five business areas. Now, these positions are related to increases on workload and to ensure we're making good progress towards our strategic priorities. Now, the detailed tasks are included in item 16 on pages four and five, but there's a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. First, $1.1 million is for seven positions to assist with administrative and operational support activities, and that includes providing various IT services, assistance with travel and training, strategy management, support for our member services, and leadership onboarding and development. The additional $800K is for five positions to support our compliance and risk management efforts. So this includes safeguarding our data and making sure we're adhering to various compliance requirements, such as laws, regulations, rules, various procedures, and administrative directives. So these tasks include things such as monitoring information security defense activities, tracking legal and regulatory requirements, processing of Public Records Act requests, and conducting confidential investigations. Now, the proposed operating budget will also include other budgetary changes. So these represent adjustments that are more routine, annual, that are really nondiscretionary cost. And so for state mandates, we have estimated $8.2 million, and that's comprised of employee compensation adjustments for our staff salaries and benefits, in addition to our pro-rata that's assessed by the Department of Finance for the cost of shared state administrative services. Now, in addition to that, other budgetary changes also include $6.6 million for the multi-year investment management plan that was previously approved by the board and the legislature in support of CalSTRS' collaborative model as part of our cost savings initiative. And this is the fourth year of the plan, and in the fourth year, we'll be receiving 19 new positions. And last, as Julie and Anthony mentioned, we're still developing the pension solution project budget, so currently we're showing a reduction of $87.2 million, and this is for one-time funding that was allotted for '23, '24 to continue system implementation activities that'll get reversed out of our '24, '25 baseline. And again, this adjustment will be revised to include the additional funding to complete the project, which we'll be presenting during the November session. So as a result, based on our current estimates, our current preliminary 24, 25 operating budget is currently projected at $405.2 million. Again, this will increase once we include the final estimates for the pension solution project, in addition to any refinements to state mandated adjustments. From a position perspective, based on the changes discussed today, our total authorized positions will be 1,401. Now, this represents an increase of 31 total new positions, or 2.3% compared to the current fiscal year. This includes the 12 positions presented as part of the operating budget concepts and 19 positions as part of the investment management plan. That concludes our prepared remarks, and while today's item is informational, we do welcome the board's input, so we can incorporate that feedback when we come back in November with our final proposed budget for your review and approval. So with that, we're happy to take any questions at this time.
Bill.
Well, thank you very much. Great presentation. I'm a little, I mean, you can clear this up, I'm sure. Earlier, we approved a contract with pension, for pension solutions in excess of $100 million. And now, we're, is that, those, are those funds deemed dispersed in the year '24, '25? Or, you know, how does that relate to the cut of $87.2 million?
So, $87.2 million is related to the '23, '24.
Right.
Baseline budget, and that, the $128 million for Sagitech, that'll be included as part of our budget package when we present the November, our final budget for the board's review and adoption in November. And so in addition to the $128 million, our, the November board operating budget will also include the additional funding to complete the project. So this would be the remaining contracts that we're still refining estimates around.
Just wanted to add just a quick clarification. The $87.2 million, part of that is part of the $128, meaning we allocated roughly, I think it was $30 million for '23, '24 for Sagitech. So out of that $128 that was approved today, $30 million is going to be spent roughly in '23, '24. So when we bring you another budget request, it'll be the $128 less money that we've already used in '23, '24. So we won't be putting the full $128 in addition to the budget that we already have, which is at $422.
It'll be 98.
Or, or maybe less. We've got to do the math because.
That sounds good.
[Laughter].
Thanks.
Okay. Gail?
Thank you. And Julie, congratulations. I don't know if we've had a moment to acknowledge and appreciate the, will you tell everyone what it is, because I'll get it wrong if I repeat it?
Your recognition.
Your recognition into the Hall of Fame, as in.
Thank you. I've been recognized by the Wall Street Journal. I'm part of a group of CFOs, mostly private companies. They're CFOs. We get together. I haven't got a chance to get together with them yet, but it is coming, and it's really exciting because it provides me an opportunity to network with them and understand what their best practices are, especially in areas where they're very private and don't share information. And so I'm hoping that I can make friends and, and bring back some of those best practices to CalSTRS. So thank you.
Congratulations.
And I have one, just if you could, when you bring back the budget, I think the positions you're asking for, I think just an understanding of vacancies and how many you've been able to fill up is platonic has been really helpful getting us that information. But I think for everyone, it's helpful, just prior vacancies, the rate at which you're filling, any challenges with that, kind of as you're asking. Obviously, we won't take a position on this today, but, but I do think that's helpful information in general, just to be really clear on that. And I think that, to Mr. Prizan's question, the same question about pension solutions once Ms. Hendricks gets her the full budget, I think that'll answer a lot of those questions because it just will make a lot more sense in context.
Because it can get kind of confusing. There's some funding in this year, more going into next year. Yes, so we'll, we'll have that all laid out for you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I think that concludes our questions. Thank you so much for the presentation. Okay. We are on number 17, Enterprise Risk Management Report. Like carrying your own name tag?
Now I know my name.
Very good.
It's written right here. I can read it.
Sometimes it feels like that, right?
Good afternoon. My name is Phil Burkholder. I'm your Assistant Director over Enterprise Risk Management. I'm here to present to you our semi-annual Enterprise Risk Management Report as of June 30th, 2023. What's on the screen is the heat map that we give to you as part of the board item. It is Attachment 1. Just, and it is an approximation of where we feel our risk for the organization is, both from an inherent perspective and a residual perspective, for each of the 10 risk categories that are on the screen. You'll notice there are three risk categories that had a slight change since the last time we reported to you. I would say that that is a healthy sign that we're evaluating our risks. It's not staying stagnant. You can see that we're actually going through and doing some evaluation. And I'll give you just a couple of highlights of kind of where these changes came from. The pension funding investments, we reevaluated that risk category, and specifically one of the subrisks in there. We had baked in the implementation of the pillars project in support of the collaborative model. It gives me a chance to project my voice. And as soon as that project has been successfully completed, we reconsidered that and decided, you know, that the risk there has diminished. So that's why that one has changed. The operational and reputational risk categories, those were affected by us removing subrisks. So in the case of the operational risk category, we actually combined two subrisks. They were both specific to disaster recovery and business continuity. The approach that we're using now for our disaster recovery has kind of made one of them obsolete, and so we combined those. It's still not close enough. I'm still not projecting well enough. Okay, still working on that. So we combined those two subrisks, and we removed another one, another one associated with the pillars project. And so we had to go through and rebalance the weightings for the entire risk category. And as a result, when we rebalanced things, the, the inherent risk increased slightly. Nothing dramatic, but it did, it did increase a little bit. Reputational risk was exactly the same, same piece of the puzzle. We actually removed a subrisk associated with the hiring of people that have not given us truthful statements about their education and experience. We had added that a few years ago. We have done a really great job of creating some controls around that, and so we removed that risk. And so as a result, we rebalanced, and the inherent risk increased just a little bit. The details around each of these are all part of the risk report, which is Attachment 2. There are paragraphs under each one of those risk categories that describe kind of the changes that have taken place. So if I didn't cover something sufficiently here, there is extra detail there. All right. I went too far. Stop pressing buttons. Okay. All right. Our emerging risk universe map. This is Figure 1 on Page 5 of Item 17. For those of you that have been really paying attention to this, you'll notice it's not quite as busy as it used to be. That's because, you know, we, emerging risks emerge, and sometimes they become something we got to deal with, and sometimes they just go away. And so as part of our program, we've been going through and trying to make sure we identify that. So I'm going to walk you through some of the changes we've made. Two are fairly obvious, and some aren't, because they're just not there. So we used to have 12 emerging risks listed on here. We combined the cost of computing spike with geopolitical disruptions. After lots of discussions amongst our risk champions and the executive team, we, we came to the understanding that really that cost of computing spike will manifest itself through geopolitical disruptions. That's where we're going to see that. So we removed that one and left geopolitical disruptions for obvious reasons. We added generative artificial intelligence. Now, we've had probably five or six different discussions with our risk teams, various in the organization, and we felt that it was time to add this, as the organization's still trying to figure out how best to manage that kind of technology in our organization. So we don't really know how it's going to affect us yet, but we definitely have it on our radar, literally, and we're watching it, as we want to make sure we put it on the screen. And then we remove three others from, from this list, mainly because they are risks now. They're not emerging anymore. So inflationary pressures, ESG opposition, and commercial real estate are all things that the organization is now managing. These risks are no longer emerging. We've got a fairly strong handle on how to manage them as best we can, and we've operationalized the controls there. The one other thing that we've done is you'll notice we've moved number four closer to CalSTRS, and that's simply as a result of all of the frequency and the severity of all the cybersecurity events. We, we kind of feel that this is probably going to affect us quicker than we would have liked, and so it's definitely closer than it was in the past. We are constantly looking at emerging risks and our overall risk for the organization, and we'll continue to do that, because that's, that's what we do. So any, any questions for us? I'm happy to answer any.
Can you talk a little bit about when, when, all right, there's some weird feedback in this room. So the human capital emerging risk, can you, when you talk about that, what do you, what do you mean exactly?
So human capital is one of those that's.
I think I know what it is, but I want to know what you think.
So I'm, we're on the same page.
We've, we've actually had a lot of conversation around human capital with our risk champions, with our executive team, internally with my own team. You know, there's a lot of going on with hiring, how well hiring is going, you know, how was our retention rates? And some of that is already represented in our operational risk category. But there's things, it seems like there's always something new that's popping up from a human capital perspective, whether it's, oh, we're going, we're going back to the office now? How is that going to manage? How are we going to manage that? What kind of tensions is that going to create within the organization? So we've left it on here as because it's constantly changing. It's a fairly dynamic emerging risk. At some point, I'd like to think we could take it off, but I'm, we're just not comfortable doing that yet.
It's like our, but it's thinking about like our people, basically, the people that work within the CalSTRS organization and kind of all the things impacting them. Okay. I find, I think what I'm, I don't know if other board members feel this way, but I, I find, you know, when I read this write-up, it's, it's helpful and interesting. I find, like especially since we've had cybersecurity briefings, and obviously everyone's talking about ChatGPT and AI, and it's hard for me on the, on the, your previous slide, you know, where we kind of, you have the purple and the red, and can you go back to that You know, I don't know if Scott's out there, I see Brian, but it's, it's hard sometimes for me as a board member to then take this and go, okay, like information security has been up there for quite some time now, right? And I kind of, everyone I talk to and every organization they work at, it's right up there, too. And I just wonder if maybe you could help us with.
Priorities?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. The priorities or how to think about these, not just as sort of, you know, issues that organizations look at with risk, but for us at CalSTRS specifically at this time, how do we, you know, interpret this? Because some of these things seem like they're just, and pension administration, until we have pension solution in place, I'm hoping those go down. I mean, right? Okay, she's just nodding, so that makes me feel better. But maybe you can help us interpret, yeah, how to prioritize this, or to think about it for us uniquely instead of just like, enter, you know, sort of, yeah, organizations are all dealing with information security as a high risk.
I think your question is well placed, and that's actually why we originally created, it's been a few years since we created this, this version, but it was because one of the board members had asked, how do I prioritize this? And so we tried to put this in a, in a, in this form to kind of show you that information security is one of the highest risks for the organization. It is something that we're, we're very diligent about trying to manage, and yet we still are going to be impacted by events. Even though we've, we've got lots of controls in place, we're still going to see those things. You know, reputational risk is impacted by cybersecurity events. Our ability to finish our transformational efforts affects our reputational risk. So those are always going to be fairly high for us. You mentioned pension administration. Pension administration, you know, ability to pay our members timely and accurately. Well, now we've got a project, which right now is transformational change. You know, those two are now one of the, two of the highest risks to the organization. And so it does very much parallel the priorities of the organization.
I think Brian wanted to weigh in.
So please, Brian.
Thank you. And I, I do appreciate the, the work that Phil does, and, you know, Lyndon, get a chance to introduce herself as overseeing our compliance and risk function, but it is very much a function, there's a process. So we do, we identify the risk, we identify the various aspects of the risk, we identify those mitigation measures, and when you apply all those, you get these results. So if we identify a lack of sufficient passwords, and then we institute a, a system for passwords, the risk goes down. That does not change the real world risk. And so I think, and one of the reasons information security is so high is because it's actually, instead of looking at two dimension, it's three dimension, and the, the major dimension is velocity. And so what you're, exactly what you're looking at is, this is not, there's no speed here, this is a process. So what looks like it's come down today could go up tomorrow. So the, the way we approach information security is that it's always, we're always have to mitigate it, we always have to approach it, and it changes on a regular basis. We report that in our information security report, but we have to have some way to sort of get a handle on reporting the, the risk to you and what we're doing about it. So again, when we go through this process, we work as a group, and we say, okay, these are the, the portions of the risk that we can identify, and these are the mitigation measures addressed to those portions of the risk. And this is the score that that generates. But you can look at that and say, not, our entire system could be taken over tomorrow. That score is just what we can do to sort of address those risks. So they do kind of exist in sort of parallel universes. So I, you know, I look at this, I think we're doing a great job of addressing, but I get no comfort from that. I don't think the.
I guess I'm not the same.
I, I don't get.
I appreciate all this, and I still stay up at night worried about the next.
Because that's internal. We're doing everything we can, but we don't know what they're doing out there. And so that's why it'll stay up there. All we can show you is that we are trying our best to address the risk and take the measures and apply it, and that's really what, what the score really shows. So I appreciate that.
Michael?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just Phil, point of clarification. Number four, is it really an insurance availability, cyber insurance availability? Can you just expand?
Brad, would you like to answer? I'm sorry. So we, every year, we, we place cyber insurance, and we go through our process with the underwriters, and we provide a lot of information, answer a lot of questions, the, and we do go through the pricing exercise. And what has happened is a lot of insurers have disappeared from the market, and those that haven't have started, because they've had to pay claims. That's the way insurance, once they have to start paying, paying claims, either the, they either get out of the business, right? They either get out of the business, or you have to pay a lot more money. There are some, also some states have passed some legislation forbidding coverage for ransom attacks. So sometimes that's a carve-out of a policy as well. So it's hard to get a full spectrum cyber insurance policy. It's getting harder and harder. The marketplace is shrinking, the prices are going up, and then there's some state legislation that's really addressed it, trying to stop the bad guys but not allowing people to insure against ransomware. So it is a much more complicated, much more expensive marketplace. And so you can't ignore the trend. And the trend is that, you know, this, these policies are covering less, they're costing more, there are less people in the marketplace. So we want to, we want to track that for you.
So as we think about information security, cost of insurance to protect ourselves becomes a concern because of what you just shared.
It does. And, and what, what are you getting for that money? Right? Are you getting, you know, are you getting coverage for, in the instance of ransomware? Are you getting coverage for that? Are you getting coverage for the forensics to go in and, and review your system? So it is, you know, we go through this process every year. We spend a lot of time with insurers in the underwriting process, and so it, but the signals are there that this marketplace is getting more and more difficult to place coverage.
Ms. Miller?
Really, I see the two pension solutions, but in terms of, we talk a lot about the updates to our system, but how long do we have until that system stops working? That's one of your, on the previous slide, that was one of your biggest risks. Because that's a two-part risk, right? I mean, we under, we don't need to belabor the pension solutions, but to the, to the actual software, hardware, technology, how, what kind of runway do we have on that?
I'm not sure I can speak to the runway. I can tell you that I ask that question almost every quarter. And the answer is, and reflected in the scores that you've got here, we have the resources that we currently need. They are becoming less abundant. And so the ability to, to maintain it is kind of dependent on outside sources, outside, it actually is outside sources. We do, we spend a lot of time trying to find the resources to bring in. There you go. There's your answer.
Are you talking about the new pension solution?
No, she's, she's asking about maintaining the start.
Talking about the legacy system, because we heard before it was 25.
Ashish and Chief Technology Officer. So that's a very good question, and I think that's the.
Speak up.
Is, we have a lot of issues to retain the existing staff in there. So we, what we did, we're reaching out to other vendors like Software AG, who has the mainframe and others, to maintain that one. We have a lot of issues to retain the existing staff in there. So we, what we did, we're reaching out to other vendors like Software AG, who has the mainframe and others, to maintain that one, as well as, we have some staff that will just say that they can postpone their retirement a little bit. But we added more consulting, consultants in the, to maintain the care and feed for the mainframe system. So so far, we put the mitigation for not just now, but last three, four years.
If we may, maybe just as an information request, get a, kind of a timeline for our legacy system and the current mainframe, just to make sure we.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
What kind of mitigation strategy we have?
Thank you. And then just another question, sir, just the, the investment, the pension funding investments? That, is that just a, and that's a pretty precipitous drop, because isn't it always based on markets? How is, you're saying your risk is lower even though the geopolitical and markets are? I'm just, I don't understand how you arrived at that.
In this case, we lowered, the, the risk was lowered because we removed the effect of having to implement the pillars project that came along with it.
Got it, okay.
So we were able to successfully implement that, that took pressures off of not being able to use certain tools that investments needed to, to attain their goals.
The analysis is solely based on implementation of policies, not at all the, the ability to reach full funding? It just seems like it's impossible to quantify the risks of some of the.
It's actually a combination of three different risks, and those sub-risks are very specific to be able to. I hear, I hear mumbling in the back, I was, I wanted to know if anybody wanted to jump in before I.
Thanks, April.
Hello, April Wilcox, Director of Investment Services. So the, the reason why it was lowered, like Phil said, was specifically because when we started implementing the pillar project, we increased the risk because of that. So it is solely based on that. We do have the risk of all of the things that you mentioned before, on the geopolitical, the inflation, the ability to be fully funded, the ability to read our 7%. They're embedded in there, but those have had no change.
Oh, great, great. Thank you.
Okay, I believe that concludes our questions. Thank you very much. Are there any public comments on item 17?
There are no members of the public in queue for item 17.
Okay, that brings us to item 18, Ms. Martinez-Wade.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Joyce Lee Martinez-Wade, Director of Governmental Relations. I have one item for action for you today, so I can start with that, if that works. Wonderful. SB 765 is a bill that we have spoken about before, but it's changed quite a bit since we last mentioned it. So currently, this bill is raising the annual post-retirement earnings limit from one-half to 70% of the median final compensation of members who retired for service in the fiscal year ending in the previous calendar year. The bill also modifies the process for obtaining an already available exemption from the separation from service requirement. It removes the need to get school board approval, and instead, documentation is required to be provided to the exclusive representative at the employer, and it also requires that the employer certify that layoffs have not happened in the previous 18 months. Those provisions are in effect from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2026. And at the end of those two years, the bill also requires CalSTRS to provide a report on post-retirement data that we already collect. So the staff recommendation is that the board take a neutral position, since the bill does not have significant or adverse effects on the services or benefits that the system provides. With that, I'm welcoming any questions.
Okay. Sharon?
So Joyce, on your recommend, it's staff recommendation to, to remain neutral.
To take, to take.
To take a neutral position, okay. So I, I just wanted to share my feelings about this. I did run into Portantino at a, a rally, actually, at Pasadena Arts Center last week, so I got to chat with him a little bit about it. And I, I'm, I just want to also say I'm a CFT member, and I know CFT, I did talk to Tristan Brown, who I think you know, Joyce Lee, who is, is supporting. I guess I'm really excited, actually, to talk to, I think I talked with Blake a little bit too, to the superintendent, maybe, about further legislation to help promote what I think is a crisis in California and a lot of other states around just teacher shortage. I mean, the New York Times is talking about, you know, no one wants to be a teacher anymore. You know, teachers are dealing with all sorts of, you know, physical challenges. Don't get me started on what's happening around LGBTQ issues with students. It's a hard time to be a teacher. And so, so I think that my, my, my challenge with this piece of legislation is, it feels a bit like duct tape on the, on the, on the tail end of something, so having, I love my retired members, Doug Oars on the audience from, from up in San Francisco, Karen Yamamoto on our board, and I appreciate the idea of trying to incentivize people who are retired to come back. I really want to address the other end of that problem, and I think it's a bigger issue. I, I don't necessarily have a huge disagreement with trying to kind of band-aid this other end, but I, I am just a bit concerned that we're not addressing the real issues, trying to have a more sustainable development of teachers in the state of California, where teaching can be a respected profession, a safe profession, a, a profession where you're respected for your professional opinion and skill as an educator. And, and you're paid properly with good benefits and a secure retirement. So that's, so I, I would support the staff recommendation to remain neutral, I wouldn't oppose it. I guess I would just welcome maybe more detailed and thoughtful conversations about a longer-term solution to the problem. Because I worry that we're just going to continue to have bills like this that are two-year bills. And I love our retired members, I want you to enjoy your retirement, and I want to raise up the next generation of educators in our classrooms, so. I just, those are my feelings, I would lend, you know, to a, I guess at this point, because I'm feeling sort of pulled into the, the staff's recommendation.
Joyce Lee, something I didn't hear you say, and I just want to clarify. My understanding is that when the retirees come back, neither the retiree nor the school district are paying anything to CalSTRS. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Blake?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Sharon for your, your comments regarding, I mean, I understand the difficulty as you kind of compartmentalize this. Just for context, this is the final iteration of the bill. The previous version of the bill was amended out to incorporate the increasing of teacher residency grants, as well as a carve-out for stipend. So we do understand this is not the solution to our teacher shortage, it's just one small tool. One of those, it's one small tool, and it's the issue that the superintendent is committed to, as well as the board, we discussed this in terms of strategic planning and impact on the fund. And a special thanks to Joyce Lee and your team for technical assistance. I've, like, I feel like I've spammed you at this point between countless meetings, trying to get advice and, and information, even before the session started. Thanks to Senator Portantino for authorizing the bill, and the California School Association for the sponsorship. I just want to state that the final version of the bill is definitely a reflection of feedback from various stakeholders, so thanks to them as well for their engagement. And I want to stress the fact that this bill has a long list of supporters, zero opposition, and has unanimous support in the legislature, which speaks to how thoughtful and necessary this policy is. As fiduciary, the superintendent is committed to protecting the fund and ensuring our members and beneficiaries receive the benefits they rightfully deserve. And as crafted, this bill does not jeopardize that, nor is it administrative burdensome, as Joyce Lee stated in the analysis. And for context, this bill builds on the two executive orders that went out during the pandemic that waived the income cap and waived the 100-day waiting period. This bill is much more restrictive than that, as Joyce Lee touched on, and it adds additional guardrails to ensure transparency and accountability. And one point as relates to assertion the need for this position, for waiving the 100-day waiting period and the income cap, in the event that you post a position and cannot hire, you have to submit the paperwork to the exclusive bargaining unit as well as to CalSTRS under penalty of perjury. That seems to be a pretty high standard of care. And just to get into state, this is not intended to solve the teacher shortage, but one short-term tool. Supporting the bill simply signaled, in the event that districts cannot hire a teacher or an educator, that we welcome a retired, experienced CalSTRS member to fill in for a larger period of time, instead of oftentimes a long-term substitute with the emergency credentials, who either, who more often than not is not paying into the fund, and if they are, the amount is negligible. And so at the appropriate time, I would like to make a motion that we move from neutral to support on this measure. Thank you.
You can do that.
Second that motion.
I have a question.
I have a question too.
Where are we on the, on the, on the queue?
So when there's a second motion on the floor, I believe we need to start over on the queue.
Well, didn't I make a motion?
Right, but when there's a second motion, don't you take the second motion first and then go backwards to the first motion?
I'd like to speak to the motion, though.
Right, the second motion. Correct?
Correct.
Yes, I understand.
Because if I'm not mistaken, the first motion, was it seconded? I don't think it was. I don't, I don't think you made a motion.
That's okay, that wasn't, there wasn't a motion. So we have, so Blake, I'm sorry, are you, you're good.
I'm done, thank you, thank you.
So then we'll just keep going. Bill, did you want to speak to the second motion?
Yeah, I don't want to speak to any of these motions, I, I have a question. And, and, and the question is, first of all, I don't know enough. I mean, you know, and what's the status of this bill? I mean, aren't we at the end of the legislative session?
It's out of the legislature.
So it's been passed out of both houses, and so our endorsement, our support would have, you know, would little impact on the legislature, because they've already passed it. And so now it's with respect to the governor. I don't have enough information or enough understanding, because I heard two very compelling arguments. And I sort of feel like the judge that says, would you go back and brief this some more before I make a decision? And, and so, you know, my position is, I'd have to go along with the recommendation of staff at this point, which is to remain neutral, because I don't know enough. And I don't want to vote on something as a fiduciary that would have adverse impact on this fund, even if it, and I don't know if that's true or not, but if, if, even if the scintilla of, of a chance that would happen, I don't, you know, I couldn't support it. So, you know, there's a factual dispute, there's no resolution of those facts. The bill has been passed, it's going to the governor. I don't see any reason for me to, to, to get involved in this, I want to stay neutral.
Okay, thank you. Ken?
So I, I'm speaking against this motion, primarily because I.
There's only one, apparently there wasn't the first motion, so.
You know, this is like, like Sharon said, it's, it's sort of like a bandage on a problem that we really need to focus, however, there are unintended consequences that I see in, in my own district, where this is more taken advantage of by administrator than, than teachers who are retired. First of all, the unintended consequences that I see that this bill brings is that it encourages early retirements from teachers, and, and it, it basically, you know, double dips. So when you are retired, you can come back and, you know, substitute, why not? I mean, you're getting paid at both ends, and so that's the unintended consequences. Furthermore, as a fiduciary responsibility as a board member, I see it as something that will affect us in the long run, whereas we're taking more teachers into retirement. This encourages early retirement, which means that we're going to be paying out more, and then we don't have new teachers that are, that are coming into the teaching, which is the teacher shortage. And that. Paying into the system, you know, that's making less going into the, the system. So, you know, there, there are unintended consequences that, you know, this bill comes with that we don't talk about. It is a good concept, but bad policy, at least in, in my opinion, my humble opinion, in that. And so with the, the waiver, I saw in my own district that there are more administrators taking advantage of this than teachers do. We still have a shortage of substitute teachers despite the waiver in the last couple of years. Based on the numbers that are being collected, the percentage isn't that, that, that big of a difference, at least in what I can see. And so therefore, I, as, as some, someone who has at least looked into this bill a little bit and have talked to a, a few people, a number of people about it, I feel that, you know, we, I go with the recommendation of the staff to stay neutral. And I would, I would definitely be in favor of making a, well, I'm speaking against, so I'll stop there.
Okay, Controller.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Malia. I am, am not an educator, I am a parent of a young child. I am a graduate of the San Francisco Unified School District, all the way through kindergarten through 12th grade. And I, my question for you is, what exactly is the process that you take legislation through to come to a neutral position?
So we gather analyses from our staff, from the different areas that are affected, so we can determine, again, if there's administrative burden or what have you, also on the policy concerns. And then we put together the analysis, and then we look at the guidelines that are in the board manual, and we look at which would be most applicable to the legislation that's at hand, and then we bring that analysis and that recommendation to the board.
Was a survey conducted of members to find out what the general mood or attitude is?
We did not conduct a survey.
And do you normally come to legislative recommendations without surveying your members?
Correct.
That's normally your policy?
It's a, correct, from the system perspective.
From the system perspective. And so also my background, I spent eight years on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors and now elected State Controller, so I know a little bit about legislative policy and policymaking. And I want to speak a little bit to Mr. Prezant's point was that we have little to impact on the legislative process, and I agree with that. But I think one thing that is incredibly significant is that we have a very big problem. And usually when you have a very big problem, you need to have all hands on deck. What's unique about this particular piece of legislation is that it's bipartisan. And for those of you that live and work in the state of California, you know that's not an easy feat, to have something to come out of both houses with bipartisanship support to be on the governor's desk, I think is pretty significant. To me, that means that there were a lot of people that were involved. Also want to highlight and note that this is, the recommendation is of a neutral position, and I think that we, if we were to take a position, I'm in favor, favor of it, and we'll be supporting for, for it. Also, we take, sending a message to the members, to the people who are, who are part of this. And Mr. Tang, to your question, I think you, you know, you represent certainly one part of the state of California. My larger question would be, what is, what is the statewide numbers are saying? You know, you were talking about the waiver, is that just representative of, my interpretation of your remarks is that it was representative of your, of your experience. But my question is, is that, does that represent the entire state? Then my next question would be, well, what kind of diligence? Do teachers know about the program, or administrators kind of the first to get wind of it and, and to apply? The way I see it is, is that this is a really big statewide problem, challenge, that needs everyone's help. And this is not an end-all be-all, this is not going to answer all and address all questions, but it is a tool. And when I think about the housing crisis, when I think about the homeless crisis, everyone has a responsibility to move in a positive direction. And I see this as a, as a small piece of legislation that moves us in a positive direction that is trying to address a, a problem. The converse would be to do nothing, and when you do nothing, we will, I think, exasperate the problem that we have. Those are just my thoughts, thank you.
So I'm going to take the chair's privilege and put myself in the queue next. I would like to say that when we're sitting on this dais. I would like to say that when we're sitting on this dais, all of us have a fiduciary duty to CalSTRS, and I think that that's the lens with which our GR department has looked at this bill. We have zero analysis on how many people are going to do this or not do this, and when we're going to have school districts hire teachers that are not paying into our fund, and when we're going to have teachers who are going to be hired and school districts are not going to be paying into our fund, and when we have no idea how many teachers could retire to take advantage of this and then get paid their retirement and their salary, and again, not be paying into the fund, I consider it my fiduciary duty to protect the fund for the teachers of the state of California. Regardless of whether this could do fabulous things, which I could have an offline conversation with anybody about how this is really playing out, as you guys know, I'm a CTA member, and I have a lot of information about that. I'm not going to share it here. So, I would respectfully ask that every board member think long and hard when they vote about what their fiduciary duty to the fund and the teachers of California is, because that is our primary goal here, and I think I take it very seriously. I work very hard and make sure that I'm informed, and I hope that everybody else is doing the same thing.
I move the question.
Okay. Okay, I guess we can do that out of order. We have to vote on that, right?
Call the vote, call the roll.
Okay. We're voting to call the question. That means we're voting to vote.
On the recommendation of staff.
So, we're not voting on, we're not voting on Blake's motion yet, we're voting that we want to vote now, rather than continue discussion. Okay. Okay, so, that's okay, you can do that, that's parliamentary procedure, so.
You want me to roll call the question, to call the question?
Correct.
Okay, great. Controller Cohen?
I am voting not to adopt state recommendation, or the staff recommendation.
We're just voting on whether you want to vote on the motion right now or
I'm voting yes to vote on the motion now.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prezant?
Yes.
Ms. Yamamoto?
You're voting to vote on the question.
Yes.
Mr. Tang?
Yes.
Ms. Hendricks?
No, because I want to hear from the other members, but it's okay.
Mr. Cunningham?
No.
Mr. Rafino?
No.
Ms. Miller? The motion does not pass.
Even if I vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we are going to continue down the queue. Mr. Rafino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the State Treasurer and a member of this board, Treasurer Ma is dedicated to supporting thoughtful efforts to address California's critical teacher shortage so that we can bolster up future generation and educators of our state. And that is why Treasurer Ma is pleased to support, and as he was said by the Controller, this bipartisan legislation, Senate Bill 765, which is jointly authored by Senator Anthony Portantino and the Minority Leader, Senator Brian Jones. According to the California Commission on Teacher Credentials, credentialing, sorry, there were more than 10,000 teacher vacancies across California during the 2021-2022 school year. SB 765 offers a much-needed solution to this crisis by permitting retired CalSTRS members to return to an education position in a more expeditious manner and with greater consistency. This bill removes the 180-day sit-out requirement under certain circumstances before a retiree can return to an education position, and lifts the CalSTRS compensation gap on retirees' earnings. These provisions will enable local educational agencies to quickly and efficiently fill vacant positions with experienced and qualified educators, thereby ensuring there are students have access to the resources they need to thrive. This bill is consistent with previous effort, as it was said earlier, that provided greater flexibility for CalSTRS retired members to assist when pressing staffing shortages, and that have proven to be effective tools in addressing these shortages in the past. In addition, and as importantly, SB 765 expands the CTC Teacher Residency Grant to provide additional incentives for prospective teachers and waives the financial need requirement for a thousand Cal grant awards to be given to students pursuing the teaching profession. These measures will help to bolster the teacher workforce in California and provide much-needed support to students. Again, these, this bipartisan legislation strikes the appropriate balance on the use of retired annuities. And for these reasons, Treasurer Ma is proud to give 765 her full support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just to, first I have a question for Joyce Lynn. Can you touch on some of the guardrails in place as relates to raising this cap and waiving the 180 waiting period? Just to kind of touch on Ken's point of regard and the unintended consequences.
Sure. So, currently, in order, well, not in order to, but the law requires people to use the pay-in-place for people that they are hiring in retirement. It requires them to consider hiring active members. And it's not before, but it's just part of the process. And for the separation from service requirement, it says that they can't have received any financial inducement to retire, there has to be a critical need, they can't essentially be backfilling their own position.
And then, can I make one more comment? Thank you, I mean, thank you, Madam Chair. As it relates to fiduciary lens, this is just a scenario, because again, as a CalSTRS board, that's our main focus, that's something on policy regarding the teacher shortage, how does it affect CalSTRS? And as we know, the teacher shortage will have an adverse impact if we don't, if we don't right the ship in terms of reaching full funding, ensuring benefits for our members. So, you talk about the current process now of having a pension, a long-term sub instead of a retired teacher. So, an example, I can't imagine a scenario with a new teacher. Again, it's already very burdensome to be an educator, the way it's perceived, unfortunately, it needs a total reframing, but I digress. Having a new teacher at a school that's dealing with staffing problems, that may be working alongside a majority of long-term emergency credential subs, instead of a retired educator who may have been a former teacher leader for mentorship, I can't imagine how that could be conducive to a supported work environment. And I say that to say, that could potentially be a contributing factor to teacher burnout and teachers leaving the workforce, which then would have an unintended consequence in terms of us not reaching full funding or having benefits for our educators. That's all, thank you.
Karen?
Hi, thank you. Lot to talk about. The goal for this bill was to curb the teachers, to curb the teacher shortage and bring more teachers in. That's my understanding, right? That was the main goal. You want more teachers in, right? Because there's a teacher shortage.
Yeah, the current iteration of the bill has been amended, it's just somewhat, for sort of a better term, stop the bleeding here, to address the shortage. We don't intend to bring, build up the workforce, we're trying to address the shortage.
Right, okay, okay. All right. Okay, so, we have, I don't know, I just have, I just get really emotional right now because this bill is effective July 1st of next year, if it does get signed, so for two years. So, for that Band-Aid amount of time, this is going to help the teacher shortage by having those guardrails. Can you talk about those guardrails again? Because I think I just need a little bit more clarity on, what are the guardrails in place for this legislation?
Do you want me to speak to it? Listen, I'm fine either way.
Whatever, whoever can.
It should be Joyce Lynn.
Yeah, Joyce Lynn.
There's minimal guardrails in the law around hiring retired teachers under the annual earnings limit, so it essentially has to do with making sure that they're hired within the rates that are already paid to what would be an active member. There's also, so basically, the guardrail around post-retirement work is the earnings limit. For the separation from service requirement, and I did leave off an important guardrail, so thanks for the opportunity to follow up, it is only for members over normal retirement age, because the separation from service requirement is required at the federal level for those lower than normal retirement age. Members can't have received a retirement incentive, they can't have been the need for hiring them in the first place, so they essentially can't be backfilling their own position, and they have to be filling a critical need.
And that's all built in to this legislation or federal, the federal guideline?
That's current law and built into this legislation. I would say the additional guardrail that the legislation puts in is the fact that the employer can't have had layoffs in the last 18 months. I suppose another guardrail in current law is that the school board has to approve it, that's being removed by this legislation. That's a provision from PEPRA as well, so this is where we start to differ from PEPRA, the Public Employees Pension Reform Act. And instead, the bill has the employer provide the documentation to the exclusive representative or the union.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Process questions for me. One, can we see, Joyce Lynn, the guidelines that you referred to on how you make a decision to support, or, I've never seen those.
Sorry, they're in Section 5 of the Board Policy Manual.
Okay. And then, second, this is the second bill we're considering after it's not even important. I mean, it's already on the governor's desk. And so, this feels like a conversation we probably should have had in January when the bill was introduced. And so, it's a process thought about if we are going to consider legislation, let's do it where we can have an opportunity to matter.
The problem was it was being changed.
But that's how legislation is, right? And we, when it's, you're with it for the whole time, right? I mean, if it's good bill, then we choose to support, and we support through the process. But that would be my comment, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Last one, last one. Thank you, Chair. To follow up on Michael's comments, I totally understand, I get it. However, we have had discussions earlier, Superintendent raised it at the May board meeting, we've engaged with Joyce and her team, and another example of, okay, it's quote-unquote fully baked, right, as it's gone through the committee. We ran into the same scenario last year with AB 1667, where the bill got passed and then we made a position closer to the date or whatnot, so it's synonymous to a degree.
It's still a pass from houses. We decided we voted to support. Yeah, that's fine, that's okay. I mean, I just, my last statement, just, I think we agree with the problem, it's just kind of a strategy piece, like, what's the wisest way forward? And I would love for the governor and the legislature to focus on how to make teaching a safer and more attractive place for people to enter into for employment than continuing on top of what we've already done to add another Band-Aid, second Band-Aid on the tail end. So, I respect the superintendent's, you know, but I think it's, we agree on the problem, I think it's just a strategic piece on, what are the pieces on the solution, is what I would argue, but.
I'm, you know, indifferent. Ken?
So, the whole point of the bill is to help with the shortage of substitution, substitute teachers. I think if that's really the goal, then we need to pay substitute teachers, because who really wants to spend a day in a school with a bunch of kids making $150 a day? I mean, if you break that down to, you know, eight hours, you divide that into 150, let's just say 160, that's about 20 bucks an hour. Well, minimum wage is, what, 20, 21, 22 dollars? Who would want, who would want to?
That's not what these, that's not what this is, though. They're not substitute teachers, they're retired.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is that they're, that the shortage of, to solve the shortage of substitute teachers, right? Because if I'm, if I'm, you know, going to be substituting at a school, why not just go to, you know, I go to In-N-Out, I get paid much better than paid $25 an hour with pay vacation. I mean, you know, that's where I think we really need to talk to the educators who are in the room in solving these separate problems. And so, you know, we can't really solve a problem by bandaging it. And so, with this, I think, like the Madam Chair says earlier, sitting on this board, I think that fiduciary responsibility is key. And so, that's where I'm standing in this, in that, you know, it is my retirement plan, it is my retirement benefit. So, you know, I want to continue to have us really focus in on our fiduciary responsibility on this, and really think about it as we vote on it.
I agree. Brian?
Complete side on, we have a public hearing scheduled for 2:35. I wanted to let those who are waiting for that or who are following us, to let them know that we will start that hearing as soon as we conclude the discussion and commentary on this item. Thank you.
Well, I have one more person in the queue. Controller.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Osselin, my question is directed towards you. When you were going through your process in evaluating the legislation, the proposed legislation, did you take into consideration the fiduciary responsibility? And what did your analysis conclude?
That if this bill encourages people to retire earlier than they otherwise would have planned to because they plan to return to work, that there could be an increase in benefit liabilities. And if this legislation encourages more people to return to work after retirement instead of active teachers to come into the classroom, then it puts the funding plan at risk.
And in what way does it put the funding plan at risk?
Because members and employers in the state don't provide contributions on post-retirement work.
And is there, are there numbers associated with that analysis, or is this kind of just general high-level?
So, it's general high-level assertions about, not assumptions, but assertions about how the plan works, and so, we don't know how many people will take advantage of it. Generally, there are a low number of retirees returning to work, and you can see that on page three of the analysis, and so, but you can hear from our actuary as well, but that analysis is briefly covered in the fiscal impact section of the analysis, of course.
David Lamorel, Deputy Assistant Actuary, Joyce did a very good job. At this point, it's something that we're just going to monitor, we've been monitoring people returning to work after retirement for years. The numbers have never been high enough to, I would say, be, to materially impact our funding plan, so that's a new unknown. We don't know how many people may elect this, so we're going to continue to monitor it. But there is a risk that if people do retire earlier, our liabilities may go up, and this could translate over time into a need for you as a board member to raise employer contribution rates to keep our funding plan on track. So, that's what we're going to be monitoring. Unfortunately, we have, we don't have any numbers we can provide, so we're going to be monitoring, and as Joyce reported earlier, I believe we'll be required to report to the legislature in two years how many people elected to do this. So, we'll be in a better position two years from now to provide a more number information related to this. So, hopefully, that helps.
That does help, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, David, since you're there, we have been told, this is fairly important, we've been told that this is a mature plan. What does that mean?
It basically means, if you look at the number of retired members that we have compared to the number of active to the number of active, it's a, like, when you first start a pension fund, you generally only have active members who are working and contributing. You have very few people elect, collecting benefits. Now we have about, or the ratio is 1.5, so we have about 450,000 active members, about 300,000 retirees. So that's what a mature plan is.
So if we don't get, I mean, the real problem here, as I see it, is we need to get more teachers coming into the profession at, at, at the beginning so that we have them for a longer time. It's like we need more water in the barrel to keep the cork going up.
Correct.
Okay.
And you heard yesterday.
So the demographics of this are not advan, advan, an advantage?
Not from a funding perspective.
Okay. So I just want to put that on the record.
Yes.
Okay.
Did I hear I have another question? Is that what I heard? Okay.
Thank you. So Ms. Joyce Lynn, does this legislation that we're discussing, does it have a sunset? This is not like, we're not, it's not going to pass and live forever.
Right, so the sunset date in the bill currently is June 30th, 2026, and history has it that those sunset dates on exemptions to our earnings limit, things like that, get extended often. But there is a sunset in the bill.
The actuarial says we won't have enough information in two years, but the legislation sunsets in two years. And so also, I think I heard the actuarial say that the numbers are really low that people who leave the profession come back into work. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Then there are numbers on page three of the analysis, so you can see that in 2021, 22, there were 18,790 retired members who came back to work. And you mentioned there's 400, no, 300,000 retired members.
Yes.
300,000?
Correct.
18,000 came back?
Right.
And you said that that's 3%? Is that what you said? Not you, the gentleman. David?
No, I did not say it was 3%.
What did you say?
I, I said we have about 300,000 retired members today.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so you said the same thing she did. Thank you, no other questions?
Yes, we also have to do public comment.
I know, but we should just vote and then we can do public comment. Don't we have to do that before we vote? Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so do we.
We have some public comment, I believe.
Um, yes. Our first public commenter will be Chris.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Chris Reeve, I'm the Legislative Director for the California School Boards Association. We're proud to co-sponsor the legislation, so I'm pretty sure you know which way I'm going. I just want to first commend Joyce Lynn and her team on working with the bill. We were engaged with CalSTRS very early on in the conversation. This was not an easy bill, especially from CSBA's perspective. And the reason why is because our board members take it very seriously, the fiduciary responsibility that they have, because they see firsthand the impacts that the growing rates have on, in both in CalPERS and in CalSTRS, right? It eats into our general funds and it impacts the day-to-day operations and our ability to serve our students. The bottom line is that we are in crisis. Our school districts are in crisis. We have classrooms without teachers and we have schools without principals. I actually have a Northern California School District that has four elementary schools without a principal. And it requires a superintendent to cover masked, mass geographic areas to be able to provide the type of leadership that a principal or administrator can provide. I just want to speak to the issues of the guardrails as well. The guardrails that were taken into the bill are significant. They require the district to be able to assure CalSTRS through penalty of perjury that no teacher accepted a position. I have a superintendent out of Lake County who went to Utah, Idaho, Colorado, went to five different teacher recruitment conferences, spoke with over 150 potential teaching candidates and brought back one candidate. The way this bill is constructed is to speak to the investment that the state has made in the 2122 school year, which was $5 billion over five years, to be able to address the issues of the pipeline concerns. So I certainly hear, hear that from the board, but the issue is that that rubber has not yet hit the road. We are still waiting for that money to take effect. We are not going to see the type, that investment come to fruition for at least another three or four years at best. Initially, we were asking for a five-year sunset because we wanted at least get to a point where we would see the investment of the state on those. And we are very much grateful for the state's investment in that regard. And so in that regard, the, the guardrails ensure that the district is always going to hire a teacher first, a new teacher first. The practical impact of the current cap, that 50% cap that's in current law, means that a retired teacher only serves only through the, up into basically near the, like, around Thanksgiving. The, the increase that we're proposing, that's proposed in this bill from 50 to 70% buys that retired teacher an extra 40 days of teaching so that they can at least get to maybe around, let's say, Valentine's Day. That's all it does. This is not a, 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 an issue that is of great concern for my board members because this is one of the few tools that the state has to address the, the teacher shortage today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Dana.
Dana Dillon, is it on? Okay. Hi, everybody. Dana Dillon, CTA NEA Retired Vice President, former CalSTRS Board Member, but more importantly for this discussion, former CTA, CTA Retirement Committee Chair. I'm getting up in response to Ms. Cohen's questions with Mr. Tang. The California Teachers Association State Council took the recommendation of CTA's Retirement Committee to watch this bill. I know that there, and then State Council vote on it. State Council is approximately 600 people. They are elected to represent about the 300,000 members that CTA has. So this is a recommendation that isn't just Ken's perception of what's happening in his area. This is what CTA statewide believed of the legislation at the time they took their position. I know that there have been amendments, some guardrails put up. CTA still has some very real concerns about the bill. In all due respect to the previous speaker, I retired three years ago, my salary was $75,000. $70,000 cap will put a person in my district almost through a full school year as a substitute. So I, I think that there are, there's geographical concerns, there's still guardrail concerns that we would have. I would ask that the board keep with a neutral position. And I realize it's too late to really have influence and add more amendments to that legislation. And I know personally that there's a huge crisis. I get asked often when I meet with teacher members of CTA in, in my area, they would love for me to come substitute. And I think Ken's right, there's, I'm not going to do it for $100 a day. There's a tremendous need, but this vehicle is going to be a small Band-Aid. And I think we really need to attack the problem in a much more precise economic way to actually get people into the profession. So I would like you to stay at the neutral, please. Jennifer, would you please read the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jennifer. One more.
Jennifer Baker with the California Retired Teachers Association. What I wanted to note is that we were very deliberate in taking a watch position on this bill. We did not take a support position because there is much more beneath the surface of the water in regard to this area than many people realize. And I'm going to go back, and I don't even know if there are any members of the board that were around when this happened, but previous members of this board experienced CalSTRS getting pulled into PEPRA. This was one of the primary reasons CalSTRS was pulled into the, into PEPRA. And I know because I was sitting in the room and Ed Durman was the only other person and we were on the CalSTRS side, trying to argue against pension reform and CalSTRS getting pulled into pension reform. Other pension systems had issues such as extreme spiking. You remember the City of Bell, you remember pension holidays. Those were not issues CalSTRS had. But this particular issue was used as justification to pull CalSTRS in to PEPRA, thereby reducing the pension benefits for all of our members. We have two tiers now. This was one of the issues, one of the primary issues that was used to reduce teacher pensions. Previous legislatures with the support of, of previous teachers' retirement boards had used incentives such as a longevity bonus, increasing the age factor, creating incentives to try to promote active teachers to stay longer in the classroom. And it worked. Granted, we also had 107% funding at the time. So I realize we are in a different fiscal situation, but you need to also remember we're in a different political situation. Absolutely, we have a crisis in education. But you all know that we have a crisis when it comes to protecting defined benefit pensions because they are systematically being eliminated in other states. And the justification for that elimination is the fact that there are unfunded actuarial obligations. We've done a great job being a national leader, and I want to commend you and the work that you've done, especially Chris Elman's team, to try to correct that. But we have to remember that we don't want to do anything that could potentially jeopardize CalSTRS getting pulled into another round of PEPRA. We still have individuals, even former members of this board, who want to eliminate defined benefit plans. And so it's very important to make sure that we're not creating policies that can have unintended consequences. And because this specific issue had been previously used, I urge extreme caution because there's much more to this than it seems, which is why CalRTA had taken a watch position. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Doug.
Hi, my name is Doug Orr, Chair of the CFT Retirement Policy Committee. The CFT voted to, to support this bill, but it was a very interesting discussion getting to that position. It sounds exactly like what's going on on this board. We were worried about how many administrators were going to come back into teaching after 20 years out of the classroom and having no idea what they were doing. That's one of the things that Ken was talking about. We worried about how many people came back and not contributing into the system and therefore the system would have fewer contributions. But we were also worried about classrooms with no teacher in them. And so we went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, and it was a pretty tight vote, which is, I think, what we're going to see on the board. But ultimately, the CFT thought that the financial risk of the system was small enough, given how few people were coming back, that it would make sense to try to put the Band-Aid on the problem for two years. And in those two years, pushed really hard at the legislature to come up with a real solution, which is paying teachers more, getting more respect for teachers in the classroom, and trying to really solve the problem. But it's one of those situations where the perfect is the enemy of the good, right? That we need to address the crisis now for at least two years, giving us a chance to then bring the teachers in. And so the CFT has a position of supporting this legislation, and I would urge the board to accept a support position as opposed to a neutral position. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That is the conclusion of public comment for item 18.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to read the motion that we're voting on, Jennifer?
I believe it's to adopt a support position on SB 765.
Yes, because Blake made a motion, so we're, we've moved on. That's why I had her read it, so everybody knows what they're voting on.
Okay. Controller Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Prisant?
No.
Ms. Yamamoto?
No.
Mr. Tang?
No.
Ms. Hendricks?
No.
Mr. Gunning?
No.
Mr. Rafino?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Upstain.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to reflect your vote?
No. Yes, but no.
The motion does not pass.
Sorry.
The motion does not pass.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did you have anything further?
So no positions being taken in general?
Neutral position is being taken. Oh, no, we need to go back and vote on the neutral.
I make a motion to support staff's position to remain neutral.
Okay, would you like to call roll call?
Sure. Controller Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Prisant?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Rafino?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Upstain.
Chairperson Bradford?
Yes, yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, but briefly, Madam Vice Chair. Joyce, did you have more for us?
A brief update on bills that are in the legislative matrix that is part of your item, so I just want to run through them as quickly as I possibly can, that, things that have changed.
The, the hearing, sorry. We forgot about the public hearing.
We have a public hearing that we're waiting for concluded.
So we.
It sounds like this is, that Joyce is still on the same item. And so as soon as that concludes, then we need to start the public hearing.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, Joyce.
No problem. So starting at the top, SB 252 regarding fossil fuel divestment was held in the Assembly Policy Committee, and there are plans for an informational hearing in the new year. SB 261, climate-related financial risk, is on its way to the governor, as are our sponsored SB 327 and the AB 1667 cleanup, SB 432. And I wanted to let you know that SB 885, our housekeeping bill, has been signed. The resolution regarding the weapon, the GPO, SJR 1, has been chaptered. And the Weapon GPO repeal bill at the federal level, HR 82, has 291 cosponsors currently. I don't know that if it will pass, but it has more cosponsors. That concludes what my comments for this item.
Okay, I do not have anyone in the queue, so thank you very much. Okay, we need to pause, I believe, for five minutes for the.
You want us to just finish?
Okay. Okay, let's go forth then. Number 19, does anyone have anything on the consent agenda that they need to pull? I'm sorry?
I'll move a little bit.
It's only if you want to pull something from it. No, it, we approve it all unless you want to talk about something.
Unless you want to pull an item.
So is there?
This is 19.
Correct.
Okay. The H is on there.
So that's not, so if, so if we say nothing, yes, that's going to happen, and that's not this one today, it's an, okay. Okay, so we are good with the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, really quickly, I just wanted to highlight for you, you have a motion from the Board Governance Committee to adopt the revisions to the Board Governance Manual Sections 2B, 2C, 2D, to L. Make sure that that's going to be in your consent agenda as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Because Jennifer was on here.
So I think that was handed to us in the packet.
Yeah, we had it in a handout. So unless anyone's pulling anything, we can.
So I think we're, okay, thank you. We're good with that. Do you want to finish or just stop?
We could, we could do the five minutes, you can wait for the table, and then, um, we're going to think of the agenda and call the comments. And then, okay, and then we'll have a break in benefits and services. Yeah, so five-minute break and then.
Yep, five-minute break and then we'll.
And then we're doing the, you need to direct people. What are we doing now?
Yes, he's, we're, people don't understand what we're doing.
So just tell us, we're taking a five-minute break and then we're coming back for the hearing, right?
We are taking a five-minute break and we're doing the hearing during that time, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So for the public hearing regarding the CalSTRS 2% at 62 compensation paid each pay period regulations, I have a statement to read. Good afternoon. I'm Joyce Lynn Martinez Way, Director of Governmental Relations. It is 2:57 PM on September 14, 2023, and we are in the boardroom at 100 Waterfront Place in West Sacramento to receive public comments on proposed regulations initiated by the Teachers Retirement Board. The board has proposed regulations that further clarify and make specific Education Code Section 22119.3 concerning compensation paid each pay period credible service is performed for CalSTRS 2% at 62 members of the Defined Benefit Program and Education Code Section 26139.5 concerning salary paid each pay period in cash for credible service performed by participants subject to the Public Employees Pension Reform Act of 2013 in the Cash Balance Benefit Program. Currently, there are instances where a member or participant performs service outside of a regular pay period, such as prior to the start of the school year, where it is not clear whether the compensation for that service would be considered to meet the definitions of credible compensation and salary. The proposed regulations address these instances by specifying that compensation paid for the service performed within 30 days of the beginning or end of a pay period would be deemed to be paid in a pay period in which a member or participant performs credible service, thereby meeting the definitions of credible compensation and salary. Within Division 3, Title V of the California Code of Regulations, the proposed regulations add new Section 27650 in Article 1 of Chapter 2.5. Under the rulemaking provisions of the California Administrative Procedure Act, this is the time and place set forth for the presentation of statements, arguments, and contentions orally and in writing for or against the regulations, notice of which has previously been both published and sent to interested parties. Is there anyone present in the boardroom wishing to offer public comments? We'll wait a short time for possible latecomers before reconvening the board meeting.
........................... The notice stated that the hearing start time was scheduled for 1:00 PM, and the notice included a request to arrive promptly for check-in before that time. The notice also stated that the hearing may be rescheduled for a different time and specified on the agenda for the Teachers Retirement Board meeting. The agenda published on September 1, 2023 specified 2:30 PM as a scheduled time of the hearing, which was delayed slightly. For the record, the time is 3:06 PM, and nobody has arrived to provide written or oral testimony. This hearing is therefore concluded with no public comments received. Thank you.
That was submitted prior to the hearing.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're back on track for number 20. Number 20, I believe, is redundant. We already did that on the consent. So we're on new business review of information requests.
I have three items, one from Item 13 to add detail to the budget, including a comparison of the original proposals to the now and through completion of the estimated date. Item 16, I have a request for when the budget comes back in November to have specifics as to the allocation for current and future fiscal years, as well as information on the vacancies, hiring, and any related issues. And on Item 17, I have a request for information and timeframeing on the legacy pension system.
Okay. Thank you. Draft agenda for next meeting. Cassandra, do you want to share that with us?
Yes, I do, if I can get to the right one. So next time, we have the HQE update, which we will include an action item for consideration of any additional funds. We have the adoption of the proposed operating budget coming on the agenda. And we have the review of funding level risk report with David Lamro and Rick Reed. Those are the things that I just wanted to highlight as the content in the meeting next November.
Hey, thank you. Are there any further statements from the public? Okay, I don't believe there are. I don't see anyone. So I believe that concludes our meeting for today. Benefits and services will begin when?
How about at 3:15?
3:15.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
So if you're on benefits and services, be back at 3:15. Everyone else?